Seven oh two P M. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Amparano.
Here.
Councilmember Burnworth.
Here.
Councilmember Tucker.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Dale.
Here.
And Mary Genio.
Here. Uh Chief Estrada, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please? Maria, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council, there's uh two items. Uh first, uh with respect to the uh claims and warrants. We would ask that you uh pull uh warrant number one oh two oh eight four and handle that separately. It involves us uh reimbursement to a council person, Mayor Pro Tem um Dale. Secondly, if you note on your agenda, the first item of business is the reorganization. Uh that's F one, and we would ask that you move that to uh F ten. And so uh that those two things, you could do them collectively, but we would request, say, there's a motion and a second and an uh action to do that.
Yeah. Uh Mr. Holbrook, any announcement of action taken in closed session?
Madam Mayor, I think we need a a a motion on the uh adjustments to the agenda.
Make a motion, the adjustments.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Item. Motion carries five zero.
And Madam Mayor, for closed session, I have no action to report.
Thank you. All right, uh moving on to D, D one, my Imperial mobile application. Oh, sorry. Uh C, public appearances, C one, for matters not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the council concerning any item within the council's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the mayor, and at that time state your name and add and address for the record. Okay, seeing none. Uh Ms. Brown, did you receive any communication?
Madam Mayor, I did not receive any comments for items on or off the agenda prior to uh tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Moving on to C two, for matters appearing on the agenda, if you wish to address the council concerning any item appearing on the agenda, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the mayor, and at that time state your name and address for the record. Okay. Moving on to D, uh D one, my Imperial mobile application, Ms. Brown.
Uh Madam, oh, this is the uh second presentation. While while we get this adjusted, so uh Madam Mayor, members of the council, you may recall uh at the time of our uh budget adoption back in July, uh we did have a provision in there for a mobile application powered by GoGov. Um we're excited to announce that our um mobile application has been uh built. Uh currently, we are fine tuning that. It is known as My Imperial. Um we'll be we'll be bringing that up on the screen. Um what this does, it does allow for a uh citizen engagement platform to inform residents of uh the goings on within their various divisions and and or subdivisions, uh neighborhoods, as well as those that might want to be uh for specific events. There we go. Thank you, Alex. Um here is the My Imperial application. This is what it looks like. It is available currently in uh Google Play and Apple um store, the app stores. Um so you can download it now. Uh we will be going over the next two weeks to allow for individuals to download it. Uh let me see here, if this will advance my slide, maybe? Making um Alex get his steps in today. Um so uh basically, those on the on the screen here, you'll get a Q R code. There we are. Uh if you scan that with your phone currently, um anyone that's joining us on our our Facebook Live or interactive there, uh you can scan that and go ahead and download. Uh you have a direct link to our city website. You'll also be able to pay your city utility bill. Again, uh there will be certain um subscriber lists you can uh sign yourself up for. This will allow us to, for example, if there is a uh water line break and emergency services of otherwise, that we need to push that information out. More familiar with the the IPOS, if you will, a countywide. Uh this is specific to our city of Imperial. We will, we will be uploading a G I S map. They'll be able to target those subdivisions and we'll be able to have those lists set aside for that. So those residents in Savannah Ranch will be able to subscribe to notifications within Savannah Ranch or Sky Ranch, Paseo, et cetera. Um we will be able to send out targeted messages. Uh for example, again, you know, water line breaks, various items of that nature, or if there's a public safety message from either police or fire, we'll be able to get that out there. Um eventually, we hope to evolve this. We'll also be able to receive information on our end, graffiti abatement, um certain problem areas, crosswalks, sidewalks, et cetera. This will be a an interactive platform that the citizens can engage in. Uh we do plan to, again, push this out over the next two weeks, and our first notification to anyone that downloads and signs up for it, uh they can receive that uh at the beginning of the new year, and I'll stand for any questions if you have.
No questions.
Well, it's very exciting. Thank you, Ms. Brown.
This this is just presentation.
All right, moving on to E consent agenda. All items appearing under consent agenda will be acted upon by the city council by one motion without discuss with uh without discussion, with the exception of warrant number one oh two zero eight four. Should any council member or other person request that any item be considered separately, that item will be then taken up at the time as determined by the mayor.
Approve.
Okay. You have a motion by Amparano to approve consent agenda withholding warrant number one oh two zero eight four. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Okay, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Make the motion to approve warrant one zero two, one zero two zero eight four.
Okay. I have a motion to approve warrant number one oh two eight four, and a second, please vote.
Motion carries for one abstention.
Thank you. All right, moving on to F two, uh discussion, oh, oh, sorry, let's see. Do we have to vote on moving to F one? Okay, thanks. Okay, all right, okay. All right, moving on to F two, discussion direction, um S R eighty six and fifteenth street intersection, Ms. Brown.
Uh yes, uh Madam Mayor and members of the council, as uh we bring up our next presentation, as you recall, uh some time ago, you had given direction in our September meeting for staff to uh bring back S R eighty six and fifteenth street for discussion. Um our traffic and analysis um has been completed for this at least area. Uh we do have data to uh provide you here um with a traffic engineer's uh recommendation. Um I will say that uh as we get the uh presentation up, uh just a quick overview, we did meet uh with this information with the school district. And I think we have a a solution here that we can um provide. So very quickly, you do see here um the uh A D T's average daily traffic counts um both in the A M and P M. What we found is we suspected that the hub of the congestion of eighty six and fifteenth, it's actually not eighty six and fifteenth, it's Imperial Avenue and fifteenth, which then causes the backup to eighty six. Uh so with that, we shifted focus to figure out ways to mitigate and resolve the area within fifteenth and Imperial uh with the current plan uh by the the school, and again, we had a very um interactive meeting with the uh school board and superintendent um earlier this week to discuss this information, and luckily, everyone is is on board here. What you have is a series of of events of current drop off. You have a parent pick or parent pickup and drop off that as they go through, and this is the the new uh proposed solution. Um current drop off does have a lot of traffic going back east after their drop off to eighty six. So you'll come off of fifteenth and Imperial, you'll drop off your child, and you would turn back east, and that creates a lot of congestion and pileup as you wait for the opportunity to do so. Um being this is the solution, as uh parents do come in and drop off their children, they will head westbound on fifteenth, crossing eighty six to Imperial Avenue. Um as they arrive at the what is currently the bus drop off area, this will now be the uh children drop off area. They will be double stacked into uh the parking lots here that you see, and they will be forced to exit uh westbound and head south on F Street. This is very similar to what you see in our parade routes. Um we actually did this specifically for the eighth grade graduation for uh Frank Wright, uh when we were happy to help and facilitate uh in that due to the pandemic. So this is basically mirroring that plan, but making it an everyday routine. Now, what also happens, obviously, this is currently the bus drop off area. Uh we will also be moving that up to what is currently known as the sixth grade drop off area. It will resume it was once the bus drop off, but rather than forcing them into the traffic westbound, they will exit south on Imperial Avenue. So they will, they will make the loop up in that cul-de-sac, I call it a cul-de-sac, but it's not. Um but in that drop off area, and then as they exit, they will go directly south on Imperial Avenue, avoiding the the parent's uh student drop off traffic that is to the west along fifteenth. Um this is our our traffic engineers' report here. Um I can, I can answer any questions. This is their recommendation, and this is accepted by the um State Department of Education uh and the state architect as the the drop off and pickup plan. The school district, a few of the next steps that we have, which are milestones because it's a collaborative effort, would be uh will be meeting with Frank Wright's staff. Uh that does include their security staff, because one contingent of that is to have uh training with their staff for crossing guards and traffic control and and make sure that we're on the same page with our police department. The uh police department will facilitate that training and work in collaboration with the school district and specifically Frank Wright. From that, we would be distribute distributing the information to the parents, uh which would include the deployment of the new plan. Um and depending on what that date is, which would be set during that first, that initial meeting, uh in the coming weeks, we would then deploy that and and have that in place prior to the next opening of of any of the businesses that are being developed adjacent to the school. As we we try to get this up on some more screens, is there any immediate questions or or comments with this? There we go.
Thank you very much for that. Can we back up one real quick?
One or?
No, right there. No, no, no.
The bus, okay.
That one right there. So we're gonna, they're gonna be coming off uh fifteenth street, cross eighty six, up Imperial Avenue north, do through the bus stop, come back down.
That's if they are, if the buses are coming from that direction, they can also come off of Belford and head south.
But this is only gonna be bus.
Yes, this is only bus.
Okay, great. Okay, that was my confusion. I was like, okay, so we're gonna get that. So no traffic at no time will be going northbound on Imperial Avenue past fifteenth.
Correct.
Okay.
This is, yes.
No school traffic at all.
That's, it's going to be excellent. If they do come up that area, they will be directed into the line, and that's where our collaboration with our police department and traffic, so that way we can get at the crossing guards, I should say, are able to get that into the routine.
How would this work once uh we have our businesses up and running? How will that work with no school traffic going northbound, but let's say uh mom wants to go to take take the kids or I'm gonna go to McDonald's and have a coffee and drop off my kids and let them run across the street.
Right. So this is what I will say. This solution is done in lieu of of no physical changes at this time, because the reality is, is until these businesses are opened, we can really only have an interim solution to what is going on. So once we have, um I believe the McDonald's is scheduled to be open uh at the end of February, we'll be able to have a much better idea once this is deployed and in place as to the traffic that would be circling around. Um and as of yet, we do have a specific turn lane that comes westbound off of eighty six on fifteenth that individuals that are wanting to frequent the establishments, whether it be the post office, the McDonald's, or the Starbucks at a at a certain point in the future, uh they will be able to get in that and turn north on Imperial Avenue.
So that kind of goes if if, you know, mom is running late and says, I'm gonna, oh, I'm going to the post office, but has two kids in the back. Are they gonna be allowed to go into the post office, or are they gonna make go on the other way?
I think that at that time, we have to evaluate. This is gonna be a constant evaluation.
Um the next slide, please?
Back or forward? Sorry.
Forward. Nope. Guess it was the other one, that one right there. Um how is that gonna, and 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 I think this is the better route for us to to be able to use that. But right there on, what would that be?
D?
N Street? No. Eight, H Street. Would that traffic, would that road be blocked for any southbound traffic and any westbound traffic?
Or F Street, I'm sorry. I just want to. Yes. Yes. Correct. Yes. Yes. And staff parking will resume where the current drop off zone is, which is in that slightly east parking lot.
We'll have visible placards to say there's staff.
That's going to be, yes. And so that's part of our our meeting and constant collaboration is to make sure that we are able to distribute the information to parents, to staff. So once this is deployed, it's it becomes, you know, we do expect, obviously, there to be some hiccups and things that we'll have to make adjustments for. But that way, everyone is at least on the same page as we move forward.
A whole more, a whole more questions.
So are we making Imperial Avenue, uh so are we essentially making it a one-way street during school hours?
Not school hours, just the time of immediate congestion, yes. Will be flowing traffic westbound.
No, on Imperial Avenue?
Mm-hmm.
If you go up one side? That's the bus.
The only buses are gonna be, oh, so all buses can come that way? So cars are coming from Belford going south, they can't get through?
If they're, the, this is gonna be the bus traffic. If they're looking to drop off kids, and we recognize that there'll be some getting in the line, which is why we do have the controlled intersection there. So there'll be a little bit of adapt and and make some room, but for buses specifically to exit, buses will travel southbound.
Right when they're start. Also, there.
And again, this is gonna be continuously evaluated, because until we know the full weight of the businesses, once they're open and that traffic and being able to make those assessments, and and there's also additional with with our S R eighty six project and things happening that that will also be able to hopefully deploy um at that time and other infrastructure improvements that will be able to mitigate a lot of this congestion with with ease of access ingress and egress into the area.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Ms. Brown. All right, moving on to F.
Go to the next. Sorry, thought we had more slides.
Yep.
Have time to ask?
Oh, okay.
Okay, so uh with meeting of of with Frank Wright, they will be using their staff for this. Okay. On Friday, I went and sat at the corner of fifteenth and Imperial Avenue. I got there about seven thirty-five, and I didn't leave till about eight fifteen, just to watch traffic. Wasn't too bad. Wasn't too bad. Didn't notice that there were some issues, but I'm I'm glad that it's being addressed here, because there has to be some training being done. I think uh some of the things that I saw was on that side of it. Um the other thing that I I was looking to see is how much traffic actually stayed out on Highway eighty six off fifteenth street. Uh I didn't see too much. There was some, not a, not many, but I I think that can be resolved also. Um I do like this plan. I think we need to, it needs to be one of those uh, like you said, evolving, moving, always live, changes we need. But I think the biggest part is that the school does have to play a big part, a big role of it. We gotta try something, so appreciate the hard work on this, and let's hope for the best. When did we put this into place?
So we will be meeting with officials in the coming week. Our our hope, uh Dennis and I did have a very aggressive timeline, which was hoping after winter break. Um but it is gonna take, as you, as you stated, just to make sure that the school district staff is trained up both for in that parking lot and that continuous flow of traffic, but also their crossing guards and leading kids into the area. So we wanna make sure that everyone is comfortable, and also that parents have had time to review and understand, so that when that deployment date comes, that they they recognize in the area what is going on. So uh we are, you know, our our timeline is January, just as to when that directly is, we'll we'll have to inform the council after that first meeting. But we'll keep you updated.
I think this is really good.
Moving on to F three, discussion action, Eager Park splash um splash pad shade project.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, in the summer of twenty twenty one, city council awarded the contract for Eager Park Splash Pad to USA Shade in the amount of hun- one hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars and twenty-four cents. This is one of the projects identified to be funded by the per capita grant awarded to the city of Imperial through Prop sixty-eight. The city conducted its final walkthrough of this project, and it was deemed complete on November fifteenth, twenty twenty one. The project did have a change order that was generated due to water table conditions in the amount of six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty cents. The project total being one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-four cents. Staff is requesting city council to accept this project as complete and allow the filing of notice of completion, and I'll stand for any questions.
Question? Shade looks really good. I like it. Nice and big. Everybody should have shade. I do have one comment. Um that was driving by right now earlier. I've seen it before. We have a plywood with some cones laying on the ground. What is that?
Just haven't removed it. We dug a uh test hole for the water table um for uh to see how fast the water would return um as a tester for our footings for the shade. We just haven't removed the splash, the the plywooder. We'll get that rid of.
Is that the six thousand dollars that we were?
No. No, this, I can, I can go into the detail for that if you have uh any further.
No, I think we talked about the de-watering one time.
Yeah.
That they were gonna put so many wells and all that good stuff that you were talking. Okay. That was just wondering what that was.
Yeah.
All right. No worries. Make a motion.
Second? I do think it's appropriate that this is happening on my last day as mayor, because that shade was my baby, so I am very excited. All right, uh do I have a motion to accept work as completed? I think there was a motion. Who was that?
Robert.
Okay.
Eighty-second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
A, can a motion to approve filing a notice of completion with county recorder's office?
Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Moving on to F four, discussion action, adoption of cybersecurity incident response plan policy.
Uh Mayor, um council members. Uh with the item before you, we are requesting the city council to adopt the cybersecurity incident response plan policy. This policy is part of the wa- um water treatment plant risk assessment and emergency response plan that is required to be in compliance with um uh EPA, and I will stand for any question that you may have.
Again. I have a motion for the approval and adoption of the city of Imperial cybersecurity incident response plan policy, and I have a second. Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Moving on to F five, discussion action, amendment to municipal ordinance regarding mandatory organic waste disposal reduction program pursuant to S B one three eight three.
Living council, as you may already know, the state of California has made organic recycling mandatory. A B three forty-one, A B eighteen twenty-six, and S B thirteen eighty-three required all cities in California to comply this when with this mandate. Um the goal is to reduce waste, greenhouse gas emission reductions, increase edible food recovery, and recycling. And the city has formulated an ordinance in efforts to become compliant with S B thirteen eighty-three, and I'll stand for any questions that you may have. We also have um republic services um uh to answer any questions.
So I have question. You know, and if I may, the goal is to reduce waste and greenhouse gas emissions reductions incre- So, once again, the state of California is putting this bill together to reduce waste and greenhouse gases. Why don't we start this in Sacramento? I think it's a waste of time, waste of money, waste of people's energy. Um they Um, they fines up to ten thousand dollars per day. There's businesses here that don't generate ten thousand dollars per day. I just think, well, this is another one that California is just full of it, and I can't say the words I really wanna say, Jeff. Yeah, California is full of crap, and then you start recycling them up there. Um. I'm gonna go on my little rant from I did last time. It's just another thing that they're trying to put into, uh, hold us down to and make us do things that might work at other places but don't work here. We have these businesses trying to survive, trying to, you know, get ahead. Now we're getting slapped with cost and Republic Services, really. This is not against you guys. You guys are doing the best job you can. Uh, I look at, uh, other agencies and then it's different. You guys are way ahead. But what I'm saying here is, is we're adding more bills to these businesses at a time that they need the money. What happens when that business gets that ten thousand dollar fine? Their door might close. California don't see that. I think, I'm with Jeff, let's take, rent one of those trucks and just send the crap to them. It's their bill, let them flip it. So with this, I, I'm, I'll be first out to say, no, I'm not for it. So expect a no vote from me.
My, my whole issue I have is another mandate.
Yeah.
And a mandate comes taxes.
Yep.
And it's just more taxes and, and at a worst time, right now, people coming out of COVID and they are being taxed again. Um, today I went and got a less than three quarters of a tank and it cost me ninety-nine dollars. Uh, businesses, the, when we have a president that says there's no inflation, I don't know how in the hell, unless they're, they got better pencils than I do, businesses right now are suffering. And to add one more mandate, one more tax is ridiculous, so I'm with you, I'm another no vote. I'm, I think every city in the state should vote no and see what happens then.
What would happen if we all vote no and this doesn't pass?
Um, we'll have to notify the, the state right away, but failure to comply, eh, it's ten thousand dollar citation for the city.
For the city?
Yes.
So then?
Per day.
So, so what you're saying is not to you, although, not, what you're relaying to us is that's legalized extortion. That's exactly what it is, is legalized extortion.
Do it, or this is what happens to you.
Yep, that's legalized.
Now, we're going back to a city that doesn't make a lot of money on tax revenue. They're gonna take away ten thousand dollars. Per day. Oh, great. That's another reason I think California should start all over, start having these, uh, limited terms, make sure these people are fit for duty.
The sad thing is a lot of people that are elected have never signed the front of a check. They've never owned their own business. They wouldn't know, they're, they're life bureaucrats. You've given us what we have to do. So. Very sad.
Don't expect a motion from me.
So moved.
I have a motion, uh, from Katie Burnworth for the introduction and first reading by the, by title only of ordinance number eight twelve, amending chapter ten B. Do I have a second?
Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries three two.
I have a motion to provide direction to staff to prepare summary of ordinance number eight twelve for publication purposes.
So moved.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries three two.
Moving on to F six, amendments, we men- I know that was my, uh, that was all for you, Alexis.
Oh, boy.
Moving on to F six, discussion action, amendments and municipal ordinance regarding restoration of a damaged structure for non-conforming issues.
Council, the item before you, um, is for the restoration of damaged structure for non-conforming uses. Uh, the purpose of the non-conforming s- use zoning ordinance is to limit the number and extent of non-conforming structures by prohibiting their relocation, alteration, their reestablishment after abandonment, or enlargement in a manner that would increase the nonconformity and to prohibit the restoration after destruction. Uh, staff has received numerous requests to amend the zoning code to allow non-conforming uses to continue in s- in case of a fire or other catastrophe. An amendment to the zoning ordinance is necessary due to the fact that property owners in the process of financing or refinancing the property, no lender is willing to loan the money unless the city will allow to fully rebuild. The commission reviewed the item, and this minor adjustment to the nonconforming standards will promote opportunities, and it is in the interests of that community. And I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
Okay. Well, Tom, can you explain to me, uh, and for those watching, what a nonconforming use is?
So, um, the nonconforming use ordinance is to limit the number and extent of the nonconforming structures by prohibiting the relocation, alteration, their reestablishment after abandonment, or enlargement in a manner that would increase the nonconformity and to prohibit the restoration after destruction. So for example, if you have, uh, a, a nonconforming use, if you have a ru- a residence, a single family residence in a, uh, residential apartment zone, then the re- single-family residential is a nonconforming use.
Or a house?
A house, correct.
So this would pretty much allow a resident that suffered in damage to be able to rebuild?
Fully rebuild.
Fully rebuild?
Yes.
Okay. So this is the benefit to our residents? It is a benefit to, okay? Yes, sir.
The, the way a nonconforming use typically arises is if you have an existing use, uh, like across the street from City Hall, you have single-family dwellings. Those have been there a long time. The city changed the, the zoning for that area to village commercial. And in that, and in a village commercial zone, single-family dwellings are not permitted. So the nonconforming use ordinance says that if you have a use that was in existence when a subsequent zone comes along, you can continue that use, but there's limitations. For example, if your house burns down or is damaged in excess of a certain percentage, you can't restore that. This ordinance addresses that situation, uh, because as it stands, a single-family dwelling, uh, I, I don't know if you noticed, there was one with a for-sale sign on it, and then it went down. Well, the reason the so- for-sale sign was removed is that a potential buyer went to their insurance company, and the insurance company said, well, we can't insure you in the event of a fire, because if it burns down, the city's ordinance would preclude reconstruction. And so th- this ordinance is inten- intended to address that. No, the, the, if, the ordinance also basically says that if the city truly wants to, uh, get rid of a particular use, then there's a process that we can go through, uh, that would basically define the period of time that that use or structure can continue. But you're, in the short haul, you're right. What this ordinance will do is it will allow uses like single-family to continue in the event they're damaged.
And then if the, motion to approve?
Thank you. I have a motion for, um, the introduction and first reading of title-only ordinance number eight thirteen, amending zoning text, chapter twenty-four, section twenty-four dot seventeen dot one fifty, and I have, I have, I have a motion and a second, please vote.
You're the type that California should think of, how to help their people.
Motion carries five zero.
I have a motion to provide direction to staff to prepare summary of ordinance number eight thirteen for publication purposes.
So moved.
I have a, I have a motion by Dale and a second by Apprano, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Right, moving on to F seven, discussion action, amendment to municipal ordinance regarding development standards for attached and detached canopies in residential zones.
Council, um, the item for use is zoning code text amendment for development standards in residential zones. Uh, as you may already know, under our residential code, uh, we have some limitations on the site and rear setbacks. We have, uh, for patio covers, we have five feet setback. Um, the staff has found that a lot of applicants coming to the city, um, have requested modification from, um, these regulations, um, due to the fact that we have smaller lots, um, throughout the city, um, and they're not, they're unable to, uh, build a decent-sized patio. Um, we asked the council to allow a three-foot setback instead of a five-foot setback, uh, for the site and the rear, and I'll stand for any questions that you may have. It's an open patio or storage shed or a swimming pool. That is correct. That was, was recommended by fire, three foot, no more than that. Eh, and only for patio covers, um, and accessory structures, not living area.
Living area is still gonna be five feet?
It's still five feet.
Okay. So this would solve our problems, like the last one, the gentleman had to tear down his patio because it was?
That is correct. Um, the planning commission approved a variance of, um, three foot. Um, having this, uh, in place, uh, will streamline the process for, um, a lot of the residents.
There is no retroactive to this?
No.
Okay. So it's from whatever to prove, from forward?
Correct.
Okay.
Actually, like this one, save our residents some money because I have seen a lot of variances come through for the setback, um.
Yes.
Especially during my time on planning commission, so.
That, and time-consuming.
That, yeah, it's time-consuming. I believe it's like fifteen hundred dollars just to apply for a variance, you know, and then our time and all of that, so it adds up really quick, so.
Saving the money, but also with some of our lots being nonconforming are really small. So it's, it's good for our residents.
Second?
I have a motion for the introduction and first reading by title only of, title, title of only ordinance number eight fourteen, amending zone, uh, zoning text, chapter twenty-four, section twenty-four dot zero dot one forty A, and a second, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Do I have a motion to provide direction to staff to prepare a summary of ordinance number eight fourteen for publication purposes?
Make a motion.
Second?
I have a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Moving on to F eight, discussion action, development impact fee program funding report.
Madam Mayor and Council, the development impact fee funding report for fiscal year ending two, uh, two thousand twenty-one before you provides the status and tracking of each type of fee collected, interest earned, amount spent, including by type of improvement and fiscal ending balances. Calculations have been reviewed and approved by the Desert Valley Builders Association. The report fulfills requirements by state code and does not result any fiscal impact to the city. We're requesting your approval of resolution, uh, twenty twenty-one dash fifty-three, approving the annual development impact fee program funding report so that the city continues to be compliant with California Government Code six six zero zero six. And I'll stand for any questions.
It's all moved?
Motion for, I have a motion for the introduction and first reading, oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. I have a motion for the approval of resolution number, uh, twenty twenty-one dash fifty-three, approving the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one development impact fee funding report. Do I have a second? Oh, yeah, um, please vote.
Start voting on the Calif-
Motion carries five zero.
All right, moving on to F nine, discussion action, adjustments to part-time and temporary salary schedules.
Um, Madam Mayor, members of the council, as you are aware, uh, come January twenty twenty-two, the minimum wage will increase to fifteen dollars an hour. What you have in front of you is what would be impacted by that, which is our, uh, part-time salary schedule. Uh, this does impact several of our community services staff as well as our seasonal and temporary. There are some, uh, general maintenance as well with that part-time temporary, um, so, but I'll stand for any questions you may have. This, what, there is no negative impact. This was budgeted for, um, back in the, uh, fiscal year budget that you approved in July, but it does require council action since it's a change to a salary schedule.
Make a motion.
Second?
I have a motion and a second for the approval of adjustments to part-time and temporary sal- salary schedules to reflect minimum wage requirements, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Moving, moving back to F one, discussion action, uh, reorg- reorganization of the Imperial City Council for calendar year two thousand twenty-two.
Well, haha, Madam Mayor and, uh, members of the council, at this time, I will open, uh, for nominations that will bo- be for the reorganization, um, of the City Council for calendar year twenty twenty-two. I will open and entertain, uh, selection for mayor.
I'd nominate Mr. Jeff Dale for mayor.
Second?
Okay, I have a, a nomination for Mr. Dale, a first and a second. Um, any other nominations? Not, I will, uh, ask for a vote. Motion carries, uh, four with one abstention. Is that? That was your final abstention for the evening? Is that what it was, Mr. Dale? Okay.
I spoke on myself.
Haha. Thank you very much, that the selection of our mayor for twenty twenty-two is Mr. Jeff Dale. I will, uh, also now entertain a motion for mayor pro tem for calendar year twenty twenty-two.
Make a motion to, um, nominate Katie Burnworth for mayor pro tem?
I'll second.
All right, I have a first and a second for, uh, Katie Burnworth nomination, mayor pro tem. Any other nominations? Okay, please vote. Motion carries five zero. I like a girl that'll vote for herself.
Congratulations, you both.
Congratulations, Mr. Dale, Mayor Dale, and Mayor Pro Tem Burnworth.
All right, uh, Mayor Dale, I'll ask you to, uh, be in the, uh, the recognition of our outgoing and then we'll have our outgoing remarks. I was gonna say, you can do it, we have a camera right here, we can do it in the fishbowl, whichever you prefer.
All right. I promise I won't push any buttons here. Okay, whereas Corinne Eugenio was elected to the mayor, or was elected to the Imperial City Council in two thousand eighteen, and whereas Ms. Eugenio was selected as mayor pro tem for the calendar year of twenty twenty, and further selected as mayor for the calendar year of twenty twenty-one. And whereas Cor- Corinne Eugenio, mayor of the city of Imperial, has made an im- improvement of Imperial Parks and her platform to enhance the health and wellness of the community in which she serves, whereas parks and green spaces are found to improve the health-related quality of life for residents and visitors throughout open space recreation. And whereas Corinne Eugenio has advocated for the installation of trees throughout the city to provide shade and comfort to residents while improving the air quality to- to provide shade and comfort to residents while improving the air quality to mitigate dust and pollutants. And whereas during the year of her mayorship, Imperial Parks have undergone transformations through the community in- involvement and activism. And whereas the mayor's advocacy and support for these efforts played vital role in the accomplishments of various projects that enhanced the overall aesthetics and environmental benefits throughout the City of Imperial. And whereas in twenty twenty-one, the City of Imperial has seen the establishment of a nonprofit Friends of Imperial Parks, of which the mayor is a non-voting member of the executive board. The addition of recreation amenities to Paseo del Sol and Eager Parks, and the evolution of park development standards. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Imperial, along with Friends of the Imperial Parks and Imperial Valley, Urban Forests recognize Corinne Eugenio for all her efforts in services to the Imperial community and present her with the, with an, okay, present her, God, my eyeballs are whacked, and present her with, with an Arizona ash tree to plant at an Imperial Park of her choice, presented on this day, the fifteenth of December twenty twenty-one. That's pretty cool, isn't it, you gotta get a park. Done, beautiful job. So much.
She di- she just asked what everyone asked all night, is this meeting over yet?
You can come up into the fishbowl, yeah. Ready, one, two.
But that's where I. I'm out of here.
I'll try to keep this short and uh.
Okay, um, gonna reconvene.
Oh wait.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, just, just one more final word, I'll try to keep this short. Alexis, I'll try to not cry. Um, first, I'd like to express my immense gratitude for the opportunity of being mayor here at the City of Imperial. Being the mayor is a privilege that most people do not get to experience, and it was truly memorable and rewarding. Um, I am grateful that in my experience, uh, I'm, I'm grateful that in my tenure as mayor, along with the rest of the council and staff, I was able to fulfill some of my greatest campaign promises uh, with the, with the sale of the Haunted Hotel. Uh, beginning, the beginning, the improvement in um, Paseo del Sol Park, establishing a plan for the Highway eighty-six uh, overhaul, um, and my beloved Shade Over the Water feature at Eager Park, of course, these are not sole efforts, uh, it, it takes um, an entire city and staff and, and city council, but I'm just grateful to have been part of this process. But I do have one last focus in my last year, amongst other, but my primary um, in my last year as council is Sunset Park, so get ready for it. Um, but being elected is no easy task, to say the least, everything we do is public and it is something we sign up for. Uh, but uh, but we are just people like the rest of you, we have families, uh, we have struggles, and sometimes being in this position brings about a whole new set of struggles. So would I do this again, I don't know, uh, but I am proud of what I was able to achieve through this collaborative process. Um, that said, I'd like to recognize some of the most important people in my life, first, my daughter right here. My, haha, my baby, my everything, my self-proclaimed vice mayor, Spencer Eugenio. She's my constant inspiration and motivation. Uh, second, my sister Martha Benivas, thank you for your guidance, your supports, and for doing all the things amazing big sisters are supposed to do. Um, recently, sorry. I've just lost my big brother, um, Eddie, who's one of my biggest fans and constantly told me how proud he was. He was brilliant, and most importantly, someone I loved and who will miss dearly. Um, lastly, I nearly lost my mom to COVID recently, she was hospitalized and almost didn't make it to this holiday season, so I'm thankful to God that she is still here because she has been my rock throughout the good and the bad. Again, thank you to all your, for all your support, I look forward to finishing this last year as a city council member. Um, and regardless of my presence here at the council, I know the city is in good hands, uh, from Mr. Marita to Ms. Brown, uh, to our newest mayor, um, Mr. Jeff, Mr. Jeff Dale, and to our newest mayor pro tem, Katie Burnworth, um. Uh, Mr. Dale has been an amazing mentor, and with great pleasure, I gladly hand over this gavel. There you go, it's all yours. God bless.
Yeah, well, yeah, it'll take every bit of that. Um, okay, it's gonna be real quick, um, department reports, um. I'm not doing any, so we're gonna go right on to uh, we'll, gonna adjourn this meeting and be back here on January fifth, uh, twenty twenty-two, see you next year. Oh, and Merry Christmas.
And that was nice and short.